...for which is sans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, you have a quorum?
This is the readout for the closed session of the Board. At tonight's closed session, the Board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which are subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. Salaries are for informational purposes only and are not voted on by the Board. Recommendation to extend the appointment of Eric Gravenberg as President, College of Alameda, from September 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $175,100 annually. Seven unanimous votes for yes. Recommendation to appoint Michael Goldberg as interim Director of Workforce Systems Grant-Funded Position, College of Alameda, from July 16th, 2014 through June 25th, 2015, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $97,850 annually. Unanimous, seven yes. Recommendation to appoint Myron Jordan as interim Dean of Academic Pathways and Student Success, College of Alameda, from July 16th, 2014 through December 23rd, 2014, or until the position is filled on a regular basis at $113,300 annually. Unanimous, yes. Recommendation to appoint Linda Sanford as interim Associate Vice Chancellor and Special Assistant to the Chancellor District Office from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, at $144,200 annually. Unanimous, yes. Recommendation to appoint Sharon Millman as Facilities Project Manager, Measure A Funded Position District Office, from July 16th, 2014 through June 30th, 2016, at $103,000 annually. Six yes, one abstain. If these individuals are present, please stand so that we can welcome you into your new positions. Mr. President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask the indulgence of the Board to move item number nine, which is consider approval of Resolution 141505, naming the Merritt Science and Allied Health Center, the Barbara Lee Science and Allied Health Center, to after our Board of Trustees reports, if that works. Any objection to that? Any objection? Seeing none. We'll also move item number 25. Item number 25 is consider an approval to extend the project labor agreement between the District and Alameda County Building and Trades Construction Council, AFL-CIO, and related signatory unions effective July 16th, 2014 to June 30th, 2019. That's actually being moved to the action calendar at the -- towards the end of the meeting. I think those are the only changes to the agenda. Seeing no objections, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I do have one item. I'd like to move to the action part of the calendar. That's item number 21, refunding of outstanding district general obligation bonds.
Number 21, consider approval of resolution authorizing refunding outstanding district general obligation bonds, has also been moved to the action calendar. Seeing? Chancellor Ortiz?
I'd like to recommend changing the order of the presentations, putting number eight before seven.
Eight before seven. Okay. We'll switch those in the order. Any other changes? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
It's been moved improperly. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we move on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting minutes of June 24, 2014? Moved by Trustee Galasa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Withrow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we move on to our public communication portion of the meeting. Trustee Brown, do we have members of the public to communicate with the Board?
Mary Trimble Norris and Reverend Cheryl Ward.
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Reverend Cheryl Ward from the East Bay Coalition for Change, and I'd just like to take a moment to say thank you to trustee President Abel Guian and trustee Withrow and trustee Brown for meeting with us on yesterday. Very productive meeting, a very good meeting, where we were able to discuss the student success programs and upcoming programs for the fall and our coming together as community members in support of those programs and making sure that all students are served in those programs. And we wanted to voice our support for what you're doing in terms of serving the students throughout the district and wanted to pledge our support as you proceed in going through all of the proposals and ensuring that those programs will serve all the students throughout the district at each of the colleges. So we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you again for taking the time to meet with us and continuing in our communications with you, and we appreciate the time that you took with us and the energy that was put forth in that meeting for some positivity, and we look forward to meeting with you again. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Mary Trimble Norris. I am one of the members of the East Bay Coalition for Change, and I just want to echo Reverend Ward's thank you for meeting with -- we had several members of the Coalition that met with individual members of the Board of Trustees, members such from the NAACP, Carol Bell Thomas Moss from the National Council of American -- of Black American Affairs, and Kimberly Mayfield-Lynch from Holy Names College and myself from American Indian Child Resource Center. And as Cheryl said, it was a very productive meeting, and we hope that these conversations continue. We were able to, I think, believe, share community resources with the trustees on matters that they will be addressing in the near future, especially those programs that serve very vulnerable populations, such as those that I work with, American Indian students. So we hope that these talks continue and that they continue to be productive. Thank you.
I did want to thank you for those comments. Does that conclude public speakers this evening?
Yes, it does, Mr. President.
I did want to point out that trustee Riley is in attendance by teleconference tonight. He's on speakerphone. Just wanted to point that out to the public. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we move on to reports, student government reports. Do we have any students here this evening?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My name is Shurindeep Singh. I am the ASU president for College of Alameda, and I'll be giving the report today. First of all, I'd like to say that our council is now in session, and we had our first meeting July 2nd, and our next meeting is going to be July 17th, on this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. in our student center. We are also finalizing the date for our retreat, which will be July 28th and July 29th, which will be a two-day retreat for our incoming officers and new senators, so they can be trained in their new positions. We are currently working on upcoming events for the fall semester, preparing and planning for them in the summer, and we are also working on revamping our student center. We are finalizing designs and furniture with our Director of Student Life Activities. We are also in working in the process of finalizing a vendor for our cafeteria as well. Thank you for listening to my report, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rudhani Ghosh, and I am the Vice President of Programs, the incoming Vice President of Programs at Berkeley City College, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. Since we are in the midst of our summer session, the update today is going to be fairly short. The newly-elected members of the Associated Students at Berkeley City College have been meeting with our advisor, Musafa Gaus, in order to go over the nuances of shared governance process and student government, since ASBCC is really the first collegiate student government experience for a lot of the new members. We are working on solidifying the nuances of student government and our planning for our retreat, as well as the upcoming events in the fall semester, and we are very excited for the new term. Thank you so much.
Do we have any representatives from any other ASOs? Seeing none. Thank you for your reports this evening. Move on to the Chancellor's report. Chancellor Ortiz.
I have no report for this evening, but I do have an enrollment update that I've asked Vice Chancellor Orkin to provide. I do have a presentation for later this evening. So Vice Chancellor Orkin, please give us an enrollment update.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Board and community and colleagues. Let's see. Looking at -- so we produce daily enrollment reports that compare and give a percent change for fall -- for both fall and summer this year versus last year. So today's enrollment report comparing fall 2013 versus fall 2014 at comparable time shows that we're about five and a half percent down from last year. However, we have -- we've been slowly closing the gap, and we were in double digits a few weeks ago. And so, partially due to our public relations campaign and partially due to other reasons, we now have registered for the fall almost 5,000 resident FTS and another batch of non-resident FTS, a total of about 5,300 total FTS. And then for summer, where we're also -- we were behind at one point. Now we're actually above last year's total. We're now 2.59% above last year's total in resident FTS with a little over 2,100 resident FTS for our summer semester, our summer session. And we, in addition to that, we had a spring intercession that was fairly successful that Alameda had. As for the academic year that just closed, we reached our initial target of 18,500 FTS, almost to the number. Our total resident FTS was approximately -- was 18,528. We had added -- we were talking about a slightly higher target, just to add a little padding, and then the state added and revised some extra money. And so, when we add that in, we will be borrowing about 100 or so FTS from the summer session just to get the additional money, but we reached our target that we established at the beginning of last year.
Questions? Trustee, consult yet?
Not so much a question as, one, congratulations. That's actually really, really hard to do. And, two, I would -- I think it'd be really helpful to see that, just see it in writing. If you could, Chancellor, if you could have that forwarded to us, I would just like to get my eyes on it again, because that's actually really -- congratulations.
We can do a daily report.
So in the past, we've gotten like a, just a enrollment report?
The daily enrollment report for summer and fall, I could get you on the email list so that you get it every day.
Just the sum -- no, I don't want that.
Okay.
Just the summary of what you just provided would be helpful to see for me. I don't know about the rest of the Board.
I'll send it.
But thank you, and congratulations.
And just one final comment. Statewide, enrollments are down, as you probably know, and it's partially due to economic reasons. When the economy goes up, people get jobs and less people are in community colleges, but we're doing quite well.
Chancellor Ortiz, anything else on enrollment? Seeing none. Next report.
Well, I was going to report on accreditation, and in that presentation, I will talk about our student success initiative. Is that okay?
Seeing no other -- any other reports?
No, not from a staff.
Okay. We move on to the next item, Board of Trustees' Reports. Why don't we start with on the -- on the my far right, trustee Withrow?
Mr. President, just a brief suggestion. I think it's been some time since we've had a report on the international student program. Mr. President?
Thank you.
Could we have, at the next agenda, in September or October, as the case may be, a report on where we stand and what the prognosis is for our international program?
You'd like to see a report on the international program? Thank you.
Right.
Trustee Oliver?
Since we're asking for agenda items, I was wondering if the next board meeting we can have on the agenda. You know, student trustees, we're not allowed to vote. We do have an advisory vote, and we would like to keep that, but we wonder if we're allowed to make motions, so we can just bring up a discussion about that maybe. I don't know, maybe not take any action, but at least bring up discussion about it. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank all of those who participated in the 50-year ceremony that we had just a few days ago. I thought both the party, if you want to call it that, and at the district office here, was a lot of fun, and then, of course, I thought it was a stellar performance in celebration of community colleges in general and specifically our wonderful institution. So it was a real pleasure to be there, and maybe some of you will recall, in a fit of, what shall we say, just joy, I ripped off my trustee button and threw it into the box that's going to be opened in how many years? 50 years. I'm going to be around to check and see how it held up and all that time, so. Anyway, I thought it was a great celebration. The other thing to celebrate today is it's the one-year anniversary of getting off warning. It's just one year that we've been free and eager to fulfill our mission without hindrances and without people looking over our shoulders. I think that's a great achievement, and it's my hope that as we move into this next accreditation cycle, we'll continue this on into the future. That's it.
Gosh, I can't believe it was only one year ago.
July 5.
July 5. That's great. I, too, attended the ceremonies for the 50th anniversary, and they were fantastic. We had good community participation, both on Saturday and I think it was that Tuesday, the following Tuesday, here at the district office. We had a great speech by Chancellor Bryce Harris, State Chancellor Bryce Harris, who made remarks as to the future of the community college system and the positive outlook, I think, for the future. Also, he also mentioned the thought of, or legislation that's been passed that allow -- would allow community colleges to actually offer four-year degrees, which is going to be an interesting development, I think, in the near future for us. But overall, I think the way he described it, that the future for California community colleges is very bright, and so let's hope that 50 years from now, we can open up that box and find some evidence of at least one trustee. And trustee Handes. We have a lot of exciting things on the agenda tonight, and I wanted to -- we do have a presentation from Assemblymember Rob Bonta's office. We're taking action this evening to do some pretty significant things for Merritt College.
Mr. President, Bill?
Yes. We're still in -- yes, trustee Riley?
Yeah, just briefly, I'm sorry. I didn't have a report. But I did want to request for future meetings information on our estuary project, on Project DD, just an update on where we're at.
So you'd like to see a project update on, I'm sorry, I lost the last part?
Well, it's just, you know, the estuary there.
Oh, Measure DD, yes. Correct.
The project going over, the partnership between the city.
Right.
And just to get an update on where we're at on that one, on that page.
Great. So trustee Riley has asked for a presentation on Measure DD between the city of Oakland and Peralta. Measure DD is the renovation of the Lake Merritt Estuary Improvement Bond that Laney is a part of, as well as the Peralta Community College District. So thank you, trustee Riley.
Thank you.
Sure. I think that concludes my report. Trustee Brown?
Thank you, President Guian. I had the honor of teaching a class at the Barbara Lee, Elihu Harris, Martin Luther King Freedom Center this last month, and it was a wonderful opportunity to interact with the youth that are being trained for leadership in our community, and it's a great, one of the great resources that we have at Peralta. So that was quite an honor to be able to participate in the legacy that Congresswoman Barbara Lee has created by founding that Martin Luther King Freedom Center. I also had the pleasure of meeting with several of our community leaders, as well as President Guian and trustee Withrow, to discuss their rich knowledge and capacity and experience and how we could draw upon the resources in our community to make a stronger Peralta Community College District. And of course, it was a wonderful opportunity to participate in the 50th anniversary of Peralta, both at the ceremony we had here on July 1st, which was attended by mayors and representatives from all of the cities that are part of our district, as well as many people from the community and our State Chancellor Bryce Harris. So it's been a great, it's been a great month, and just want to thank the Peralta faculty and staff for the work that they're doing with our students and for helping us celebrate these landmark events.
Trustee Handy, your report. Trustee Rowley. You sure? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the next item. At this point in time, we're going to move to item number nine. Item number nine is consider approval of Resolution 1415-05, naming the Merritt Science and Allied Health Center, the Barbara Lee Science and Allied Health Center. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
There's a motion by trustee Brown, seconded by trustee Galasa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We're waiting for trustee Brown. Or you can stand here behind us, so we'll all be together. Come on. Well, you know, if Sandra says come, that means come, Bill.
You can see, we're all very excited to be making this presentation.
This is all of us.
Okay, all right. What chancellor? Okay, anyone else waiting for a special invitation? All of you, please come and join us here. Oh, this is a big deal. This is a big deal for us. I can't express to you how thrilled we are to be giving this resolution today. The Peralta Community College District Resolution 14-15-05, naming the Merritt and Allied Health Building for Congresswoman Barbara Lee. The president of Merritt College should also be standing here with us. Please, join us. Thank you.
We are all one family and one community, and we do everything together, so we are so grateful for all of this, and we want our family up here to celebrate with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carl. Okay. Twee, are you?
This is my tweet.
Okay. I'm going to give you guys one more time. All of you, join us, please. Now, we will have an opportunity to formally do a grand celebration at our gala on October 10th, but this is the first step in that, so thank you all for joining us here. Whereas the United States Congresswoman Barbara Lee is one of the most dedicated and memorable members of the Peralta Community College District, Peralta Community, and a champion of the district's mission to provide excellent, affordable, and accessible education to the residents of the state of California, and whereas Barbara Lee's contribution to Peralta includes her acquisition of federal funding for community-based job training grants, student service programs, vocational education, access to internships for Peralta students, and community service education through the Barbara Lee and Elihu Harris Lecture Series in collaboration with Peralta, and whereas Congresswoman Barbara Lee is a leader, a scholar, and loyal supporter of Peralta, who has remained close to the Peralta community throughout her years of service in public office in the California State Assembly, the United States House of Representatives, and as a congressional representative to the United Nations. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition and honor of her leadership and advocacy for Peralta, the Allied Health Building located at Merritt College, scheduled to be open in fall 2015, will henceforth be known as the Barbara Lee Allied Health Building.
On behalf of Barbara Lee, her mother, and all of our constituents, and our family that's here, we want to thank you so very much, because she could not do it without the support of each and every one of you. So thank you for this, and thank you for this honor. Thank you so much. Applaud yourself.
And we also want to acknowledge Dr. Bill Riley, who could not be with us today, but was very supportive of this resolution.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all so very much.
Okay, where's your camera?
Dr. Van Putten, I don't think we have a report from our academic senate this evening. So we move on to the next item, which is number six, Resolution Presented to the Chancellor and the Board of Trustees. Presenter Jaclyn Orpia. Is Jaclyn -- oh, Jim's here. Hi, Jim.
You don't look like Jaclyn. You don't walk like Jaclyn.
Thank you. I'm not Jaclyn Orpia, I'm sorry. My name is Jim Odie. I'm the district director for our Assemblymember Rob Bonta, who's honored to represent Oakland, Alameda, and San Leandro up in Sacramento. And I'm here today on behalf of Assemblymember Bonta, Assemblymember Nancy Skinner, and Senator Lonnie Hancock to present this Assembly Resolution in commemoration of the Peralta College's 50th anniversary, or 50th anniversary. I kind of share a little similarity with Peralta. I just turned 50 last week, too, so you guys show your age a lot better. So I'll try to read this through my bifocal glasses. So I'll just read a few paragraphs. Whereas on July 1st, 2014, Peralta Community College District was celebrated its 50th anniversary, and in recognition of its commitment to providing high-quality education services to the communities it serves, it is deserving of the highest commendations and heartiest congratulations. Then I'll just skip down to the end. And whereas Peralta Community College District is a gateway to success, enabling students to fulfill their desires for personal growth, acquire skills in the workplace, earn college degrees, and occupational certificates, or transfer to baccalaureate-granting institutions. Now therefore be it resolved by Assemblymembers Rob Bonta, Nancy Skinner, and Senator Lonnie Hancock, that they take great pride in congratulating Peralta Lonnie Hancock, that they take great pride in congratulating Peralta Community College District on the occasion of its 50th anniversary, commend the district for the invaluable contributions it has made to the intellectual and social growth of the communities it serves, and extend best wishes for its continued success in the future.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We have a presentation by Associate Vice Chancellor Madlock.
All right, good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, college presidents, my colleagues, and the community. My name is Calvin Madlock, and I'm the Associate Vice Chancellor of Information Technology here at Peralta. This presentation tonight is a year-in review, which is the first of a three-part series regarding the state, current state of information technology at Peralta. I would say that the current state of information technology at Peralta is healthy. I would say it's healthy because after the first year of firefighting and team building and chaos, we were able to transition our 12 consultants by allowing our internal staff to begin fully maintaining on their own several of our critical systems such as ePATH, payroll, EZ Pass, staff development, along with PeopleSoft upgrade. We also managed our computer network at an uncompromising security level with no unplanned downtime. I would like to thank the Board of Trustees, along with the Chancellor, for approving the necessary contracts and providing the executive-level support necessary to allow IT to develop and mature as a team. Now we have system stability and system implementation maturity. We will begin to repeat efficient processes and lessons learned from the first academic year to build upon continuous improvement in the second year, now as we start innovating going into our third year. As you can see the agenda, we will talk about the IT as a service unit, the ecosystem basically, highlight major accomplishments, focus on IT strategy, and provide you an update on the Student Financial Aid Project. We do not do this alone. Our district IT service, four major units. These service units are our primary and our direct customers, as they support college services, which are our indirect customers. Information technology is involved from the time the student comes to the welcome center, to the go-to get assessment testing, to setting up counseling appointments, completing the student educational plan, and moving, and more through matriculation services, such as grade rosters, et cetera. So as we implement projects, we must maintain a good collaboration, communication, and participation with all of these service units. We do not work alone in this ecosystem. In addition, we provide oversight to technology at the campuses, such as smart classroom technologies, distant learning, networking, and voice communication. Many of you are not aware of this, but IT is split up into two distinct groups. Enterprise, which is the software, and technology, which is the hardware, along with project management, which we are currently developing. With the leadership of our enterprise and technology directors, Renell Holmes and Michael DiQuino, combined, we were able to close over 1,500 tickets, as the asterisk indicates. All while implementing projects, critical projects, students can now reset their own password without needing to go to A and R. The admissions and application process inter error ratio is reduced by 95%. A home campus has been designed to allow students to declare a major at the campus that they elect to complete their goal. We can now more accurately identify student populations that are eligible for enrollment. And finally, we are now keeping our system upgraded and providing a software release Once again, on the technology side, the hardware group, we've completed the installation of the core technology infrastructure at the Laney Tower, along with the Merritt Library, and preparation of opening the Africana Center. We've upgraded our help desk system and improved the system by establishing service-level agreements, or SLAs, committing to responding to service tickets within one to two days turnaround time. All the old network equipment here in this administrative center, along with A and R, along with PCTV, the General Services and International Student Center, has been replaced. This equipment was outdated beyond end-of-life, end-of-life, and we're going to replace the rest of it in September. Finally, we are now applying regular service patches to our hardware to help prevent potential threats and data breaches. Although the team work on the maintenance of the existing system, they also are involved with projects in the IT strategy. The existing IT strategy does not include smart classrooms or distant learning. However, we will include this in our new strategic technology plan that I'll bring back to you in late September, early October. And all this will be based on the educational master plan. Your notice columns across the top is the priority, the project name, the project number, the project status, funding source, budget, actual cost, amount saved. If you do not see a project number, a funding source, or it's grayed out, chances are this project has not been funded. I want you to pay close attention to the yellow column and notice the cost savings. You will notice that many of these projects were done in-house by our internal staff, freeing up funds to be used on other projects. For example, if you look at the upgrade to PeopleSoft from last fiscal year, yielded a saving of $351,000. And we can use this as a part of the funds to partially fund the upgrade to PeopleSoft, and also to upgrade to our finance upgrade. We only upgrade one module, but now we have to upgrade our other modules. And this is kind of what we've been talking about. The cost of deferred maintenance is becoming more expensive than the cost of regularly updates. We'll talk a little more about that in my second presentation when I come back on September 9th. We'll talk about all these types of technologies that's disrupting our normal, traditional way of doing business. We're 95% completed with our document management project and the financial aid project, as we've already started the planning for other priority aid projects through our shared governance process. I've moved many of these projects forward, such as faculty grade book module, VoIP telecommunication, classroom scheduling system, and so forth and so on. Finally, we're working on the unexpected projects for the student support services mandate, such as the new CCC Apply, SARS integration, academic advising, and even the international FAS atlas. Now we can redistribute our cost savings of over 1.8 million into other projects that need to be prioritized. Now let me give you a brief status of the Student Financial Aid Project. At this point, if you look at the ICER load, that stands for Institutional Student Information Record. At this point, for 2014-2015 Financial Aid Award Year in production, along that sliding scale, you can slide that over to now July 15th. We've loaded over 17,580 ICERS, over 4,000 for BCC, over 3,000 for COA, over 6,000 for Laney, and over 3,000 for Merritt. So the January, February can now slide over to July 15th. Over 13,000 students do not have a financial aid verification. It's not required. There may be other verification, but not in terms of the finance part. Speaking of staff, staff can actually start verifying right now, but I want to tell you, the staff should be commended. And I tell you all of them, because they are maintaining a system that was developed in 1969. They're maintaining a system that's 45 years old. While at the same time they're maintaining this system as financial aid, we'll actually implement a new system. So we have to split our time between implementing a new system and maintaining an existing system. And I think they really should be complimented on that accomplishment, and we're getting it done. So the authorizing and packaging is now being finalized, and we'll be ready to distribute aid on August 13th. What do that mean? That means by August 13th, the student, we will distribute aid, and the next day they should have the aid on their hire-one card. If they choose a check, of course, it might take a little longer, or if they choose another option, I think it's ACH, that transfer it to another bank account, it might take a couple of days, depending on that process. And so now we're going live with PeopleSoft Student Financial Aid System. And we will assure you that we are compliant by doing this. On this PeopleSoft module, we'll be automatically compliant in terms of payout reporting, loan reporting, and the FISAP reporting. There's a few frequently asked questions. Was there a go/no-go decision? Well, more like a go-slow-go decision. Based on our history, I got emails, overwhelming emails on the history of what happened before, and understand that this project had failed three times in the past. I can understand now, as working on it, and some of the people that are here will understand also why it had failed three times. But we won't fail this time. So we made a decision today, yes, and it was overwhelming go decision, based on 27 of our project team members of district-wide. So much so, Vice Chancellor Orkin stated that this type of collaboration, coordination, and participation for the last few weeks should be used as the model for implementing projects at Peralta. Dr. Norman stated that we should not begin, now we should begin, actually, baselining our system to compare it with the legacy system moving forward. Dr. Grayver stressed that we do not stop the momentum that we have gained through the process, so we'll keep on meming the exact process that we've started here. And I would like to thank anyone, everyone, for your executive-level support, because according to the standards group, the number-one reason for failed projects is not no executive support. I'd like to flip that. The number-one reason for successful projects is executive-level support. Move on is, what is the contingency plan? Well, I guess we don't need that right now, but just as you're confident of, I will tell you anyway, the contingency plan is to fall back on the mainframe, which we are now ready to do that if necessary. It's very expensive. We have people working on it. We said that we would have that contingency. There were state mandates that changed, the program had to change, very difficult. We had a lot of challenges with this. We had to replace our entire mainframe system along the way, programmers. We had a nationwide search to find other programmers, and we still survived. So as we prepare to retire the mainframe in or around December, we must give thanks to Fred Barton. Most of you don't know him, unless you're here at midnight. And typically, I'm here when he comes in sometime, and he's a night operator, and he's been operating this mainframe for 27 years. And I think he should be commended for that, and all the other people also. So what is the estimated cost savings after you retire the mainframe? I've been asked this question. After retiring the mainframe, we will save the district over $478,000 annually. We project that over nine years, that's 4.3 million. If we projected minus nine years, you can look at it a different way. The last question before I close is, what has been done differently in the implementation to ensure success, in this implementation to ensure success? One, we've integrated a project management methodology. And that's, we learned from the first project, the upgrade. And because of that maturity, we believe that this time around, we will be successful moving forward and use it as a model for other projects in the future. We provided knowledge transfer for all four campuses. I don't believe that was done before in the past by High Street or consultant. We also didn't have a DBA, that's a database administrator slash system administrator that we have, who is absolutely a superstar. And if you ever been over in that office, you should meet her. Her name is Teresa Chan. And I wasn't going to call many names tonight, but that's one name I have to call, because without that person, I don't think we've been successful, along with a lot of other ones. I also like to, because of all the transition that we've had, people changing position, all the conflict, the last three weeks, we gelled together as a team. And I know the board, the chancellor, all the administrators, colleagues, and the community will be proud, because in the end, we're going to make sure that we put the hire-one card in the hand of the student, and money on that card. I also want to say last and not least, that we was able to procure High Street. We did a nationwide search to find a consultant that specialized, Dr. Robert Delur, who specializes in student financial aid. We did the background check, we did the reference check, and this was a lead implementer and a professional, and we believe this person will take us to where we are now, and we'd like to thank them for that. They were flexible to deal with us when we were unavailable. When we could not support the conversion process, they were there. They dealt with us when we had data integrity issues. When you're moving from a 45-year-old system to a modern system, you're going to have some data issues that you hadn't heard of before, and High Street was here along the way to help us resolve those issues. And also, they were able to integrate our existing campus solution module, help us lead the way along with our financial aid system. In addition, we hopefully, that we'll have them for post-production support. That will give us the security that we need, the stability that we need, so we can kind of stabilize the system, so we're guaranteed that those dispersment happen at the right time. So we're looking forward to that. So chancellor, the board, college presidents, colleagues, and the community, I don't want to take any credit for this, but if you want to give credit, or if you have any credits to give, I would ask you to reserve those for the team that worked tirelessly, night, weekend, delayed vacation, missed graduations, to make sure this happened for the students this time. So if that team is here, I would like them to stand and be recognized, if any of you are here today. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustees, questions? Trustee Brown.
How does this, the current sustainable IT infrastructure schedule compare to the one that we had looked at in 2012? one that we had looked at in 2012?
Yes. The one we have this time is actually, we are still operating off the one in 2012. The only difference is, I've added projects that are relevant now that wasn't relevant in 2012 to that. They have not been funded. For example, in 2012, we did not consider upgrading our finance module. So you'll notice that that is on there. And 2012, I didn't include what we call VoIP telecommunication. That's our voice-over IP, voice-over Internet protocol, which mean our telephone systems at the campuses. In 2012, there was no Measure A funds or no network-type projects. They were only software-related projects. So I've added those. In 2012, there was no Triple SP projects, like the academic advising module, early alert, if you look at the last page. None of those were a part of the 2012 IT strategy. In addition, I've added, we have them graded out, I can barely see them here, but there are more things that were added, such as Compass Upgrade, we added MIS redevelopment, Security Administration Project, the wait-list project, we're looking at those. So we have integrated those. They don't have funding associated with them, but the reason I wanted to put them here because at one point, there was a question about why aren't the hardware or the network refresh projects a part of the IT strategy? And my people couldn't answer that question. The reason they couldn't answer that question, because they wasn't here when the IT strategy was developed. And so what we've done is now, we're going to include those network projects as a part of it. So when we come back in September or October, we're going to make sure that it's not going to be an IT strategy per se. It's going to be a new strategic technology plan. And that new strategic technology plan going to depend heavily upon the educational master plan, because when you develop a technology plan, you don't develop the technology plan only in a single mode. You have to take this educational master plan, and based on the master plan, it's going to cover the needs of the colleges, and then technology supports it. So when we put all this together, all these projects will be there, and I hope I answered your question.
Well, I see that there are things that are still, that are graded out, that were on the 2012 report, and I know that VoIP is part of the standard construction general conditions for technology. So I guess I'll probably have to just ask you again, and not take up the time in the meeting.
I would like to respond. Yes, you're correct. I grade out those, everything you see graded out, there has not been funding loaded for those projects. Even though they were a part of the IT strategy, right now, we have not allocated any funds for those. There may require a little more discussion in the finance area, but right now, if I look at my budget, I don't have no funding to fund those projects that's been graded out. What we would do, we would go through a shared governance process or participatory governance process again, and reprioritize all these projects to find out which one are more relevant now, and we'll take that saving that we had, and we'll reallocate the funding for these projects that are graded out, moving forward, based on the priority and the need of the Do anyone from finance here want to respond to that? Because I think historically, before I, you know, even though I look in a book, and they are, the money is there, but his money is not really there in terms of... Susan, could you maybe speak on some of the projects that were part of the IT strategy, and there, we don't have funding actually allocated? And that's what I was showing here, or trying to show here.
The Measure E funds were used for Priority A, for the first set of the Priority As that were identified in the first IT strategy, two years ago, was it Calvin, when those funds were allocated?
Yes, from 2012 February.
It was two years ago. And so those funds have been prioritized and have been budgeted for. At that time, there were no additional funds available from the bond projects to fund the Priority Bs and Cs. And so that's the funds that have been allocated to this point. We are reconciling both the Measure E and Measure A to make sure that the projects that were budgeted for are remaining on target and on budget, and those additional dollars can be reallocated possibly, but we're not to the point where we have actually identified those funds at this point.
Thank you. I think it just would be helpful if we were able to measure where we are in terms of the integration of the 2012 plan with the current plan, because we're trying to see that the, that the course we charted, that we're still on track. And so I'm just flipping back between the two of them. But it's helpful just to see that the, what we had planned, where the deliverables are, and where we are on the schedule, because I see the bar charts that show the implementation time, but it's necessary to go back to the original plan to find out if we're actually keeping pace with what we said we were going to do, and then to compare the priorities that were set then.
Yes. I think, when I finish the series of presentation, what we'll do, I think it'd be better, instead of trying to combine things, why don't we just take the 2012 plan, compare it against the new plan, and then we can kind of look at the comparison at that point? And I think that might give you the clarity that you need. Yeah.
Trustee, you in?
Thank you very much for the report and the financial aid component of it. I just want to clarify. So that project has been implemented, and you're saying that right now, all of these ICers have been loaded?
Yes, seventeen thousand of them, yes.
And so that we can expect that at the beginning of the school year, students will actually get their money?
Absolutely.
Wow, okay. You know, I mean, that sounds like such a basic thing, but you know, for ten years, that didn't happen, year after year after year. And so I'm just a little bit in shock and disbelief, so I'm just going to take your word. Yeah, okay, because we've been told so often, oh yeah, it's about to happen. So that's great, thank you. I want to second Trustee Brown's request around the, looking at the Gantt chart here, what was the original date versus where we actually did it, so that we can see, yeah, we actually performed, or we didn't perform, or we got it early, or whatever it is. I think that would be, that would be very helpful for us to have a sense of what's going on there. And then just to clarify, the areas that are graded out, these are things that have not yet been done?
Yes.
Okay, and so that the dollar figures that are in here in some cases, that's your best guess?
That's the best guess, based on the 2012 IT strategy. They already, kind of the numbers that were sitting there.
And so, like, if it says zero dollars, does that mean this one's free? Or it means we have no idea?
We have, well, we have not did the estimation on that. Those are new projects. For example, we haven't done any estimation on it. We know that as a need.
Okay, so that's an unknown, not a free.
Right, it's not free.
Just guessing, you know, just trying to be clear on that. And then, when you come back in, I guess we're talking about, is it April? We're expecting a sort of a final version of a new IT plan after the ed plan, and da-da-da-da-da, is that about right?
Yes, after the ed plan, yes.
Okay, so we could expect these gray things to actually be on the chart moving forward or not, if we just took them off and said, we're not doing that? And we would, we would have then an implementation date?
Yes, yes. Because these that's graded out right now, these were, we went to a participatory governance process, and these are projects that were identified as a need from the colleges and the constituencies, and such as the business units here at the district. So we noted them down, we want people to recognize that.
And this is a work in progress, because you haven't actually gone to look at the ed plans, et cetera, and done the shared governance. So this is where we are right now?
Yes.
Work in progress. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great, very clear.
Yep.
I guess one of the, congratulations on your work.
Thank you.
Completed to date. I, that's one of the things I've been pushing for since I got on this board, is to make sure students got their financial aid at the beginning of the semester, not at the end. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the results from that, and I hope everything goes smoothly. I'm trying to figure out why, however, and this is one of the items that you talked about this evening, for what reasons do we need to continue? If the program has in fact been implemented, why in fact do we need to consider another contract for High Street as we move into the, if it is in fact ready to be implemented? I don't understand why we need to, why they're on the agenda again this evening.
Right, that's a good question. And the answer I have for you is, you know, when we went out to the campuses, all four campuses, we took a survey. The survey is going out now, but overwhelmingly, the overwhelming voice that I heard was that we need more training. We need someone to be there to hold our hand, basically. They didn't say hold hands, but someone there to make sure that if we have a problem, that we can call somebody that could actually answer that problem that's qualified and have the expertise. This is what we got the feedback from the campuses overwhelmingly.
So what, why, for what reasons is, I'm trying to understand the, and I guess, I'd like you further to address this point, you know, right now, since we're giving the report. But in the item that's before this evening, you know, they're asking for sixteen hundred dollars for rental car. Don't we have vehicles here at Peralta that can shuttle people around? I don't understand the need for that piece of it. Can you explain?
Yes.
The rationale for that?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't see what you see at this point, but if it's, basically, we have a GSA policy that we go, travel policy that we go based on, and it's an estimate based on that policy. So if you see sixteen hundred dollars, it's based on the GSA maximum per day or something. So that's, it's only an estimate. Typically, we might not even spend that because of the hotel shuttles and stuff.
So let me ask you, what type of service is actually going to be delivered as this gets rolled out in August to the campuses? Are we going to have consultants at each of the campuses? Glitches may happen, or is that one individual that's going to be at the district office? How is that going to work?
The consultant will work with the financial aid director and the financial aid team to base it on a schedule. For example, we'll go two days at a campus to maybe help them with the financial aid schedule with the financial aid team there. And also, there will be times that this consultant may not be here, they work remotely. So it depends. So we'll have two days at each of the campuses. What the campuses were recommending, that the consultant come out and give them a couple of days when they first start doing their packaging and their disbursement. So we're trying to honor that request, along with our financial aid staff here.
Okay, so the disbursement goes out, and the dispersments go out, and the contracts exhausted, that fifty-three thousand dollar amount. At that point, our staff, our internal staff, will they have the capacity to be able to then, going forward, implement or deal with issues or hiccups that may come up down the road?
Yes, I believe they will, and based on my conversation with Dr. Orkin and Associate Vice Chancellor Adella and the Director of Financial Aid, they've told me that they feel, they will feel comfortable at that point, that they will be well-equipped to be able to absorb everything that need to happen. Because things happen so much of a rush-rush, there's a little bit instability in terms of feeling really comfortable. I know Dr. Norman don't like that word, we're never going to be totally comfortable, but I think that stability will give them the assurance they need to make sure that we at least get the first, the August disbursement and the September disbursement out, and that they have a good feel of the system at that point. Because they've been working on these two systems that I mentioned earlier, it's really hard to focus. Now that we have a go decision, now you can focus on the one system, and you can kind of shut down the old system. So that's why it's so volatile and so difficult to get that kind of knowledge transfer that they really deserve moving forward.
My last question, it seems like we've moved all our resources into this new system, which is what we asked of you to do, but it seems like one of the items that has been graded out is disaster recovery and server virtualization. What is the backup plan? Let's say we implement, we go live, and the system doesn't work, we lose our ICers, and that data goes. What is the backup plan that you have in place, given that we haven't funded, or you haven't, or we haven't been asked to fund the disaster recovery effort of the IT plan?
Well, we definitely want to do that ISO data. That ISO data is now sitting in a Peoplesoft, it's being backed up every night. What happened is, I think you may be worried about it, there disaster recovery, if something happened right now, we back up our Peoplesoft, and since the ISO data's in Peoplesoft, we have a nightly backup that backed that data up, and we can restore it at any time, based on our data recovery. Yes, it's cloud-based. So we have cloud-based backup for our disaster recovery, yes.
Trustees, any other questions?
My one question actually was about the cloud strategy and the virtualization of data, because that was one of the graded-out items, but it was still on the 2012. And I had thought that we were actually going to be able to store things on the cloud, but it's not, it's listed as with the budget item, but it's not, it appears to be unfunded. So I was a little confused as to whether or not we were actually, whether we actually had things, had the cloud data storage capacity.
Yes, we do have, we are doing cloud right now. One of the, I guess, confusing things about cloud, what actually it is, but we are doing cloud for our data backup for financial aid and all our Peoplesoft. It's being cloud-backed up now, right. Secondly, we have tape backup for the mainframe. So someone, there are tapes being backed up all the data. Now, the cloud strategy was a little more comprehensive. Basically, we're going to look at overall, how should we move forward in cloud technology?
Thank you, because I was, yeah.
Yes, yes. I understand. So, thank you.
Seeing any other questions, we're going to move on to the next reported accreditation report. Chancellor Ortiz.
Thank you.
Assistant Vice Chancellor, thank you very much. So this evening, I want to present to the board an update on our accreditation efforts based on a report you heard at our last board meeting from our consultant Fran White, who gave us a state of the district in terms of accreditation. But before I respond to that, I want to share some of the efforts that are currently underway at the process of district, when it comes to the larger accreditation mission, which is to be sure that there is institutional integrity, institutional continuous improvement on how we serve our students, whether student outcomes and program outcomes are consistent with what we say we're going to do. And this year, based on some available dollars, the district has designated three million dollars in order to address some of the achievement gaps that we have identified in our own database that we feel is part of our institutional integrity. So of those three million dollars, we have used the budget allocation model to distribute those dollars to the four colleges. That distribution gave five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the College of Alameda, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to Berkeley City College, one-point-two million dollars to Laney College, and six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to Merritt College. Today, I met with the college presidents to discuss the various proposals that their campuses have submitted for funding along these lines, and today was the first meeting to look at those proposals. I want to share with you some of those projects that we are considering. I will come back in September, once the final decision is made about these projects, to give you more detail in that regard. But for instance, Berkeley City College has, is looking at funding additional faculty advisors for their students, is looking to fund Gateway to College implementation, funding it for a veteran success, student success program. That's just one of about fifteen different projects that Berkeley City is submitting. Laney College is submitting for their one-point-two million dollars over fifteen projects as well, including what is known as the Affirm Project, which targeting African-American students. including what is known as the Affirm Project, which targeting African-American students' success. They are looking to shore up the Asian and Pacific American Student Success Program. The same thing for the Puente Program, which targets Latino students. But also in areas like mathematics improvement, STEM improvement, various areas that Laney College has identified as a need where student success can be addressed. Merritt College is also looking at funding the Affirm Program, again, which targets the African-American population. But it's also looking as funding additional tutoring for all students, additional funding for DSPNS, which would help our disabled students and their success factor. And to complement the recent agreement with the City of Oakland, with additional funding for the Administration of Justice Program, which is a program that we recently, as I said, partnered with the City of Oakland to provide students from our academy to the Oakland Police Department. And College of Alameda is looking again at funding programs that help students move on to completion, graduation. They have a special program called Alameda Promise. They're looking at funding learning communities, the Open Gate Program, the Brotherhood Program, various programs that are specific to students and student success. I'm not going to spend a lot of time today on the details, because we are still discussing which programs will be funded, because these funds are really one-time dollars. And based on our growth funding in the future, we're trying to parlay these dollars for a sustainable effort for student success. So today was our first meeting and I want the board to know that we are continuing this effort and we'll be coming back with a final recommendation to these programs.
So, thank you Chancellor. Just to be clear, the funds have been allocated in the budget that the board approved. Now you're going through the process of allocating those dollars through the college-level process.
That's correct.
Okay. And in September, you're going to, the district or the colleges will decide what's going to be, what's going to be funded and what the status of those projects is.
That's right. And keep in mind, keep in mind that this is, this is about a fiscal year. So there are some programs that can be implemented in the fall, but others may have to wait for the spring. Others may in fact need, may need some additional planning time. But these dollars are available to the colleges. They can allocate them as they see prudent for this coming fall. But if they, they need to carry it over, they will be available to them. And they, we hope that there will be additional funding available in the future. A lot depends, however, on our own FTES growth and whether our funding can sustain these programs.
So in terms of coordination, I understand, so that's our responsibility here at the district is to allocate those dollars. But in terms of implementation, let's say community members want to interface with the colleges to provide whatever support services or bring other resources to the table. I imagine that would have to, that that would get sort of plugged in at the college level.
That's correct. Today, we discussed that very same question, and that is coordination. But we felt, meaning the college presidents and I felt that it was prudent for the colleges to take responsibility for the coordination of their programs. And they will allocate their resources to do that coordination.
Thank you.
So I want to continue my presentation quickly. In your Dropbox, there's some information related to presentation given by Fran White at our last board meeting, which was a, an update on the state of the district with regards to our accreditation self-evaluations and our planning effort. The Brain Trust, as they are known, made recommendations with regards to updating the college education master plans, updating the district integrated education and facilities master plans, updating the district's technology plan, updating this district's strategic plan, and completing the implementation of the integrated planning structure. The impression that I think many of us left with, were left with at that last meeting was that the district and the colleges have been remiss at addressing some of these issues when quite the contrary is the case. And what I want to share with you this evening is a couple of things. Number one, in your Dropbox is an actual timeline for completing the, not only the self-study, but the strategic plan. We this evening hired, rehired one of our employees, Linda Sanford, who's going to serve as the lead with, along with faculty member Joseph Belinski. They will serve as the district coordinators for self-evaluation and accreditation. These two individuals have been actually participating in this effort for the last three years, ever since the planning budget, the planning budget integration model was introduced in Paratha District. So they are very familiar with this model and they're familiar with the update that we will be talking about in a minute. Welcome aboard. So just in terms of the institutional self-evaluation reports, the colleges have been working all of this past year. Each college has a self-evaluation steering committee. They are led essentially by faculty and administrators. Each college will be addressing the four standards for accreditation and have been submitting their work to the district Dropbox, which will be made available to the trustees this September. In September, we will have completed the first draft of the report. We will be editing some final documents in October. And for November, we are scheduled to bring for a first reading to the Board of Trustees these self-evaluation reports from the colleges. And a second reading will be in December, as we prepare for a March, I believe it's early March, that the visiting teams from the Accreditation Commission will come to the colleges and the district. With regards to the strategic plan, keep in mind that planning is a continuous process and it is a continuous improvement process. What the Paratha colleges have in place is a strategic plan that is dated up to this year, 2014. And we have been actually each year updating that plan by looking at our accomplishments and addressing the goals for the coming year during a summit meeting that takes place every August. This year is not any different. Recently, we came to the board with a mission statement, a revised mission statement. That is part of strategic planning. This summer, the, our Office of Institutional Research will conduct an internal and external scan of our environmental factors that affect the operations of the district. And this August, in our coming summit, we will adopt the strategic goals for 2014 to 2015. All of this is consistent with the expectation from the Accreditation Commission. Finally, also later in the fall, we will work on the narrative for the new initiatives to be incorporated in the plan. Those new initiatives include our student success and support program, which is Triple SP legislation from the Chancellor's office. We will have new equity plans. We will have the information and narrative about the program I just mentioned, which is the Paratha Accountability for Students Support, Student Success rather, Basic Skills, and Career and Technical Education. A final draft will be presented to our constituencies in the fall. And again, in November and December, it will be presented to the Board of Trustees. The Planning Integration Model has had a yearly update. So contrary to some thinking, we actually have continuous improvement to our planning and budgeting model. Each year, the Planning and Budget Committee review, doing an assessment, an evaluation of their activity and their processes and recommend changes internally, which they implement in the following fall. This, it will be no different this year and we will continue to update that model and present to the campus constituencies in the fall during our flex period, a recommended updated model, which includes additional membership and processes that will help in the, with the efficiency of this model, which again is part of the, the continuous improvement that is required by the Accreditation Commission. And finally, with regards to the education master plan, the education master plan is based on the program reviewed, which is a planning process undertaken by each discipline, each department at the colleges, including student services, including administrative offices, and including, of course, instructional programs. Those program reviews are then a compilation and, how to say, collapse into a general education master plan by the colleges. This work happens every year. It actually starts in the fall when the departments do an update to their master, I'm sorry, to their program review. And then through an internal college process, it is reviewed by the disciplines, the division, the administration, and finally, the president, who makes a final recommendation for an education master plan. All of this will be undertaken during the academic year coming up. And again, what is important to the commission, that we are doing it and that we continue to improve on our efforts with regards to our planning process. And finally, I do want to say that our technology plan also is moving forward. We have, we'll, we'll take elements of our education master plan, which will be the driving force for the technology plan. It's also the driving force for our facilities plan. All of that is on schedule. It is, it is, there's a matrix in your Dropbox with the timelines for this. And finally, while it sounds like a whole lot of work, it is a whole lot of work. But as Linda Sanford has said to me, we are up for the task. So with that, I will conclude by thanking you and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you Chancellor for your update on accreditation report. Trustee Brenner.
Thank you very much Chancellor. I really appreciate the information you've given us and the, and the projection of where we're going, where we're going and what our timeline is. We really appreciate that. And I had one question about the report on student success in terms of coordination. Would we have a, how would we address the issue of foster youth in terms of student success and the California Community Colleges, AB 21 on that, that California Fostering Connections to Success Act? I mean, there are a lot of things that are coming down from the state level to all the community colleges. And I'm wondering, would that be through the individual colleges? Or would it be centralized so that one, to, for funding purposes or for expediency?
Well, I don't have an answer for that, because as we were talking today, this is really uncharted territory for us. So we are getting new information and, but we have been in discussions and we will continue to have discussions. We will see how we can parlay those programs and that funding into student success. I think College of Alameda had some targeted, the foster, foster, I was going to say foster childcare. But did you, Eric, did you have something on that?
Yes, you know, that's a population that we're all very much concerned with. And there are so many students that are not neatly served by certain programs like EOPS. And so that's why we're looking at ways to capture those underserved, underrepresented students. And that's a part of the population too, so that we make sure that there's a safety net for them and that they are linked to other programs where they can get the support. So that coordination is where we spent a lot of time talking about today. How do you integrate those services with existing services to make sure that we have a comprehensive net? Match it with the Triple SP to ensure the success of all our students. But really, targeting specific personalized strategies for those populations.
And I think, thank you Eric for that. And to answer your question, we have ongoing dialogue with presidents and the, and the district senior, senior staff to talk about how we can leverage this type of activity. So what's going on at College of Alameda, if it's applicable to Laney College, Dr. Webb gets those ideas and takes it back. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying not to work in isolation, but we're also trying to give the colleges the identity with the work with their students.
Thank you very much. And when you're, when you guys come back in September with the report, if you could just let us know, because those are questions that the, that the community really wants us to be able to answer. And I know that there's a lot of work and brilliant minds at work on this. So just, if that could be included in your report, very much.
Well, yes, and we certainly intend to do that. As I said, this is a bit of uncharted territory. So we're trying to make the best use of our dollars. But we're also trying to make sure that we get the proper return on that investment, that we can have some measurable outcomes at the end. And if we don't get that, we don't have to spend all the money. We want to make sure we do it right, so it can be carried over. Thank you very much.
Trustee Galasa.
Thank you for all of this clarification and information in general showing us where we're going. I appreciate that very much. And I know that from time to time, many trustees feel that they're not sure what's going on. At the same time, they have the burden of knowing they are responsible for the accreditation indirectly for all of the four colleges. So this is a step forward. I had a couple of, just clarify a couple of things. I remember one of the previous cycles, there was a misunderstanding by some individual faculty from different colleges, that the Board of Trustees is, is the board of the district and has nothing to do with the colleges. And I think we've got that clarified, but it has to be understood that in, each of the individual colleges are submitting their plans for approval from the Board of Trustees. And if they have concerns, if they feel the plans are weak or whatever, it is very appropriate for them to send the plans right back or at least try to engage in some corrective measures. So I just wanted to emphasize that, so there's no misunderstandings, as there was not the last time, Ron, but the previous time.
Well, you're absolutely correct. And keep in mind that the accreditation standards, particularly standard three and four, have to do with district-level resources. Standard four, for instance, addresses the governance, which sits squarely with the Board of Trustees. It talks about the presidents and chancellors. It actually talks about multi-college districts. So you're absolutely correct. The district, the Board of Trustees are all part of the accreditation process and part of the report as well.
Thank you very much. That was my other point, was I'm very aware of the requirement, standard four, et cetera. And in the past, we actually have participated in the drafting of the board's view of how all of that is operating in the district-wide, put it that way. And so I think it would be appropriate.
Well, that idea makes me nervous, but I'll go along with that idea.
I agree with you, it could be very nervous. But I think it would be to consult the, the principles of the Board of Trustees so that at least, you know, that we have, we have a confirmation of what we believe is happening in governance. And we have our say. So thank you very much again for this report.
Trustee Young.
Thank you Chancellor for the dual reports, actually. They were reassuring, I think, you know, on the student success and equity issues, what's, what's reassuring is that, that we're putting resources onto the campuses to basically figure out some incubator projects, like, you know, what works, what doesn't work. Here, let's let the colleges figure this out. Let's let the faculty and staff on the campuses figure this out. There was a, really, in my mind, very misguided op-ed today in the New York Times, page three, that basically says, well, you know, the community colleges are all failing. And of course, they're all failing because we don't have a statewide command and control of the entire thing, which seemed... and control of the entire thing, which seemed so crazy to me, the idea that, that, that one person in Sacramento could dictate and figure out the needs of hundreds of local communities and, and campuses and so forth with any accuracy. So I like this idea, and I'm hoping that as the district then reflects back and engages in this process of assessment, that we are, you know, trying to figure out, how do we measure what's working, what's not working, and then how do we share out those best practices? So, you know, we're going to be putting specific resources in. Sometimes that's going to be one-time money. It's, in some ways, experimental money to figure out what we can do. So I'm, I'm hoping that that, that happens. I also want to just be mindful that those dollars, although we, we say that they're coming from growth, they really, mostly, you have to look at the voters in this district that approved parcel tax and allowed us to free up dollars for things just like this. It's this amazing local constituency that we have, local citizens who say, yes, we believe in these community colleges. Go at it. Please support our community, the students. And so I'm just, I'm grateful to the voters on that. On the accreditation thing, I, I want to echo Trustee Galasa's statement that, that just seeing it laid out is actually very helpful and reassuring. I, I was pretty confident that the grim picture that we got last, at the last meeting, that we're all in big trouble because nothing is happening. I was pretty confident that that, in fact, was not a complete picture of what we've been doing and what we plan to do. I'd like us to note that, you know, some of the resources that we put into this work are the implementation pieces, you know? How do we actually deliver educational resources, services, et cetera, and that costs money? Part of it is then the planning. It costs, it costs to, to do the planning, and that's our right. There's an additional cost, though, that sometimes we don't pay attention to, and that is the cost of demonstrating to the accrediting commission that we're doing this. And that's an additional cost on top. And I'm hoping that as we go through this accreditation process, that we can, in fact, quantify that, because it's never quite clear what we get from the accreditation process that, that actually then delivers value. I know that we, we go through this process of delivering services, of planning, et cetera, and that, of course, we do. Then there's this burden on top, and that's accreditation. I'd like us to be able to say, all right, that part on top costs X amount of dollars. I think we would be doing this work one way or another. Without an accrediting commission, we would certainly be doing this work, and I hope, anyway, that we will do this. Again, thank you, Chancellor, and, and more importantly, the, the faculty, staff, the administrators throughout the district, and the students, of course, who are participating in this amazing experiment and, and process of bettering the community. I really, I think from this board, you have nothing but gratitude. Thank you.
I wanted to make a quick comment regarding the article in the New York Times this morning. I got about halfway through. I knocked over my coffee cup trying to read the damn thing, and surprisingly, I bumped into Withrow, and his first comment was, "Did you see that in the New York Times?" So obviously, I'll tell you what is dangerous about something like that. First of all, it dings accreditation. It suggests, rather directly, that the accreditation process is weak, if inefficient, and has no real effect, and it, and it's illustrated by the fact that it was going to do something tough on the city college, and it just backed away, and, you know, wah, wah, wah. Secondly, it blasts shared governance as an absurdity, having faculty involved in management decisions or whatever should traditionally be management areas. And finally, and perhaps this is what hurt us deeply, is that local boards are generally incompetent, and the whole system of organization ought to be, of the organization, that is, have a central chancellor in charge of the whole, et cetera, et cetera.
The dictator.
So what I'm just saying is, that's the Shireman. I don't know if you know who Shireman is, but that's his general philosophy, and it's reaching higher echelons. And you also know Arnie Duncan is in deep doo-doo with the unions, both CTA and AFT. The, so, things are happening. Amen. Get to New York Times. Read it for yourself.
Okay. So this brings us to our next order of business, which is the consent calendar. We do have, without objection from the board, in addition to item number 23, consider short-term approval, approval of short-term assignments, hiring of non-academic classified short-term staff. We're adding Esteem Brunfield, Staff Assistant Admin General, from July 17, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Without objection, you'd like to go ahead and add that on, and I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
No move.
Seconded, third. Moved by Trustee Gonzalez-Yun, seconded by.
It was actually moved by Handy.
Oh, moved by Handy, seconded by Gonzalez-Yun. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the action calendar. Item number 25 has been pulled to the action calendar, and that is, and it's also been amended, it's been amended to reflect a change in the timeframe. Item number 25 is consider an approval to extend the project labor agreement. Consider approval to extend to September 23, 2014, Board Resolution 1314-70, authorization for the Chancellor to negotiate renewal of the project labor agreement with the Buildings and Construction Trades Council, FLCIO of Alameda County, related signatory unions. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion that's been moved and properly seconded by Trustee Withrow, seconded by Trustee Galasa. Any discussion on this item? Trustee Handy.
Yes, actually, the board was, some of the board members were talking last time and said that they would really like to have a workshop on, on the PLA. The first one that we had really was rushed through and did not give us an opportunity to put meat in into it. This time, we want to make sure that we have a, a very hearty PLA, but there are questions and things that we need to understand, like one here, I see like the, one of the things they're asking for is the district be allowed to complete up to $500,000 outside of the PLA. Some feel that that should actually be a percentage, and that, and if not, if it was a flat figure, that, that 750 might be more realistic, because that's for emergency maintenance and projects that are exempted from the PLA. These are things that I think that we really want to make sure that's included. We have a consultant that's working to bring information, but there's also information that we want him to have. Another piece on there, in terms of the small local businesses, I mean, that's a, that is the most important piece of this PLA, and I actually was the one who was fighting to get this brought back, and I don't want to see us pass one that doesn't have that piece with teeth in it. So I think that it's really important that we be able to give input or that we are agreed constantly until we come to the final conclusion. I mean, our consultant is bringing us some of the best practices, but that still means that, I mean, there are still things specific to these, to Peralta, that, and this community that we need to have included. So if we can't have a, a special session or discussion for those who want to, I, I just want to make sure that the Chancellor is coming back with back and forth between us and, and some of the facilities as well, Dr. Caro, to make sure that when we finally have something that we agree upon, that it really is a substantial piece PLA that we want, that we all want.
Thank you, Trustee Handy. Trustee Yun.
I want to echo what my colleague just said, and I want to thank that my colleagues should have been active in this issue. Trustee Brown, as I know, has been very active, paying attention to PLA, and I want to commend this board for, one, being a stalwart supporter of, of labor, I, I think the issue of the PLA is not the principle of the PLA. I don't think any member of this board has an, an issue with the idea of, of having a PLA, and we need a PLA that has real teeth. What I would like to do is amend this motion to, or maybe substitute it altogether, to recommend that the Chancellor and his staff move forward with the negotiations as described here, but that the actual PLA come back to this board for approval rather than handing over the authorization over the summer when we're not here. I think that puts the Chancellor in a very awkward position of trying to understand what the board, what's important to board members and, and not, et cetera. And so that if we, in fact, need to extend the, the current PLA, if it's expiring, then we can, by vote, extend it until September, et cetera, under the current conditions, and then have this PLA reauthorization come back to the board for more detail. I think many of us have not been happy with the enforcement mechanisms that we've got written into it and some other, other provisions that I, that I don't think we want to go into detail. I second Trustee Handy's, that, idea that we need some mechanism for those of us who are interested in the, the fine detail of the PLA, have that opportunity. So I guess what I would like to do is substitute, instead of this motion that's in front of us, substitute a motion that says, the board authorizes the extension of the existing PLA under the current, current conditions until such time as a new PLA is negotiated and brought back to the board with a recommendation date of September or October of this year.
We have to deal with the first motion on the table.
Well, I've asked for a substitute, and if we have a second.
But first, we have to deal with the first motion on the table, which would be to, to actually make a motion to postpone the first motion indefinitely, and then we'll entertain your, your motion.
Excuse me, could we just have a point, the point of clarification, there's certain, there's certain rules regarding the PLA's term and its renewal terms that I think we may need clarification from the General Counsel on before we make a vote on the motion, because I think it'll frame what is legally permissible under the terms of the agreement that's currently in place.
Thank you.
General Counsel.
Chancellor, trustee, essentially, your requested substitute motion is, in fact, the intent of this amended motion by trustee Yan. The board last, at the last board meeting approved for a period of time extension to this board meeting, July 15, so that negotiations could occur, and that at this July 15 board meeting, you would have the final PLA for approval. Unfortunately, more time is needed to, to negotiate that. And that's why this amendment was to extend out now till September 23, and at that time, we will come back to the full board for the approval of the PLA.
Thank you for that clarification. I, it, I got confused about what the substitute was, and now reading the substitute again, thank you, I see that, that the substitute to extend to September 23, in fact, is the motion in front of us. My apologies, and thank you for that clarification.
Can, can, can General Counsel just speak to the timeframe, the 60-day requirement that Trustee Brown referenced?
Yes, in the PLA, which is actually ends in, end of June of this year, there was a requirement that there must be 60-day notice in advance of an extension out. In some sense, we've already exceeded that extension, that notice requirement, but parties have been acting very much in good faith in moving forward, knowing that there is a high possibility of renewal of the PLA. The effort today by the board is really to give more time for the, for, to dot the i's and cross the t's.
Okay, so we're going back to the main motion, which is on the table. Your motion was not, did not get a second.
That, that's absolutely fine. I, I consulted with my colleague, and he had misinformed me about what we were actually voting on. That was the problem.
Hey, hey, let's not throw anyone under the bus. Any other discussion on this item? Chancellor?
I just want to make reference to our last board meeting. There was a resolution passed by the board, I believe, identifying most of the elements that were of concern that may have been missing on our current PLA. So that'll be part of our due diligence to make sure that all of those elements are in this PLA. The other piece I want to make sure the board is clear on, and, and I'm in favor of the recommendation that we have a, I don't know, mini-workshop with regards to that PLA, when we do have it up for approval. We're gonna have a discussion. We're gonna have a presentation. We're gonna also have labor present to make sure everybody's on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor on the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item is item number 21. That's the next item on the action calendar, and that's consider approval of resolution authorizing the refunding of outstanding district GO bonds. Chancellor Ortiz, would you present on this? Or actually, no, Withrow pulled the item.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, first of all, we'll move approval of it.
There's a motion to approve item number 21.
And I, I pulled it only to.
It's probably properly seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I pulled it only to highlight the positive aspects of it, rather than having it just swept through on the consent calendar. It's not often that we can save our constituents 10 and a half million dollars, and I think that it's the, the kind of thing that we need to take credit for on the part of the institution, and I would hope that Mr. Hayman would feature it in one of his articles in a prominent place. But I think even beyond that, it, it is the sort of thing that we're gonna need credits for, because we're gonna need continuing support of our residents of the service area, that we have a press conference and highlight the fact, not getting into all of the technical aspects of what's going on here in, in terms of refunding bonds and all that sort of thing, but just the bottom line. We're saving the taxpayers 10 and a half million bucks. That's all I have, so.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow, and I just wanted to point out that I want to thank the Chancellor for bringing this item to the board of this opportunity to the district. I think that, you know, we actually went out through an RFP process to engage different firms to assist us. I think it was a prudent thing to do, to actually go through a selection process and figure out which partners we were going to work with. And I think that I've gotten positive feedback on the process that we went through. I know it took a little bit longer on our timeline, but certainly, if anything, I think the markets have only improved for us at the end of the day, and let's hope that we continue down the right path. With that, I'd like to call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And at 9:10, that concludes the business of the, the board for the summer. Wanted to thank everyone for your indulgence this evening and your patience, and wanted to ask if there's any announcements.
The next regular board meeting will be held on September 9th here in the district offices boardroom. The board is in recess during the month of August. The district and colleges will be on a summer four, 10-day work schedule and closed on Fridays and weekends through August 1. Mr. President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you so much. Everyone, have a great summer. We'll see you back here in August. Meeting's adjourned.
September.
I'm sorry, September.